Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the city council meeting for November 6, 2017. Please stand for invocation and Councilperson Owen is going to do our honor.
Do it, bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us safely together tonight to conduct the business of the city. We ask your blessing upon us tonight as we move forward and keep your will at the forefront of our mind. We ask that you keep all of our city employees safe as they go about the business, be with our first responders, and all of our employees as they do what we need done here for the city of Jeff. We ask these things in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilperson Owen. Have a roll call, please.
Sure.
Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Zostadny.
Present.
Councilperson Yon.
Present.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Let the record reflect that seven council members are here. Councilperson Ellis and Councilperson Samuel are excused. And they're both out of town. I need minutes to be approved for our budget workshop of October 16, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And I need most for our regular proceedings for October 16, 2017. Minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Approve of the agenda, please.
There are no changes. Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Claims to be approved. Looks to have a general first, and I got the page numbers here. We're going to pull a couple of claims. Did you have the page numbers written down?
Yes. First one's on page two. It's about middle of the page for $15,005.20. That one is going to be paid for in next year's budget.
I apologize. Which page?
Two. $15,000, right in the middle of the page, foul.
Oh, I'm looking at part claims, that's why. I see it, thank you.
Okay. And then also on page 12, we had a lot of claims this time because it's end of the year.
It's the Walnut Ridge for $667.34. It was a duplicate. We had all the invoices and then we had a claim with a statement attached. So it's going to be paid. It was just a duplicate.
Right. So the new total, if everybody's ready for that, is $834,661.50.
Do council have any questions on the claims? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims of $834,661.50.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve general claims of $834,661.50. No further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And leads us to parks, and we're pulling one out of parks, too.
On page one, it's about the fifth one from the bottom for $200. And that new total is $59,207.39.
Were there any comments made by Park Board members?
I didn't have any.
That was being pulled because that was for a cell phone thing back in 2016. It was too old to be paid for this year, so I thought that was being pulled.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Heather. New unfinished business, some new business. We have Rob Hayes, a resolution recommended to the common council application for tax abatement for Q Works. Good evening, Rob.
Good evening. Thank you all. Frank, if you'd like to come up, Matt Hall. Very excited to be here tonight. We have Frank Atkins here with Q Works in Matt Hall with One Southern Indiana. Q Works is actually a new company that's looking to reside here in Jeffersonville. They're on Maritime Road. And with the tax abatement that does get approved, they are looking to reside there with bringing in 15 employees. And they're looking to bring in a new piece of equipment. It's approximately about $750,000. They will be going into an existing facility. Frank also operates called Siltron. And it's going to be a very nice fit for their particular company and also for the city of Jeffersonville. And I'd like to turn it over for Frank if you all have any questions, and also for Matt.
If I could just jump in here real quick. One of the things I'm really excited about, in addition to the capital investment, these jobs are way above the county average wage. These are about $22, $23 an hour jobs. And there is the potential to grow their employee base right there at that facility. So I want to make sure we got that in.
And Matt, county.
I was going to ask.
We're looking to double within the first two years to at least 30 employees.
The average county wage now is somewhere around $17 an hour.
First off, thank you for choosing Jeffersonville.
Oh, thank you. Well, Siltron's been a part of the community for 10 or 12 years now, and we really enjoy it. We like being here. We like staying local. We like being involved with One Southern Indiana. So it's a good place to stay.
They're currently in the Vote Valve Building over in the port. Frank was gracious enough to give me a tour last week. Just stopping to look around what they have existing and kind of the space that they have for their new venture. The abatement that they're requesting is on real property, or I'm sorry, personal property. And per the rubric that we've kind of laid out as our guide for the city, they do qualify for that maximum five-year personal property abatement.
And I looked over all the paper. Everything's in order, so I appreciate that.
I apologize for my ignorance, but could you share a little bit more about what Q Works manufactures?
Sure. Well, it doesn't exist right now, so it's going to be an electrical panel manufacturer for baggage handling, material handling, any kind of control cabinet.
Okay. Great.
Do we have any further questions for?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 17R12.
Mm-hmm. Second. Got a motion and a second to pass 2017R12. Any further discussion or comment? If seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion and we can pass this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. And thank you, Vicki, for getting this put on first. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Councilperson Owen and Bill Burns. They're going to give us an update on Save the Fieldhouse.
Phil, do you want me to pass them down for you?
Sure.
Thank you. Two pages.
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to come here tonight, and Matt. We wanted to thank you for your support of the fieldhouse project that we have here. Several councilpersons have asked how it's going and how the project's progressing. So we felt like it was just time to give an official update. So the Save the Fieldhouse Committee, which includes Mark Munzer, Delin Rutherford, Josh Cornberg, Les Merkley, Matt Owens, Paul Northam, and Dan Williams, we started about eight months ago for our efforts to raise 1.8 million to restore John H. Schnatter-Nahan Fieldhouse. Today, we're about $375,000 away from our goal. Currently, we've received bids for Phase One. Phase One includes the facade restoration on the front and shoring up all the brick around the building, particularly where the missing mortar is that allows some water infiltration. So that was the most imminent part that we needed to do first, so that's why we put that out for bid. Those bids are back. It looks like Phase One's going to run us about $460,000. I'm awaiting an email from TEG after they review all the bids so that we can take them under consideration at the next Parks meeting. Our last event for 2017 that we have planned is with One Southern Indiana Chairman's Council. It'll be a gathering at the fieldhouse with about 50 of their top contributors. Our efforts still continue as we solicit donations through individual businesses and grants. So, any questions?
I got one. Are you even going to be able to use the existing windows? Because I don't, I remember when we were Parks Authority, it was one of the replaced. Will they be able to be salvageable? Have you used it all? Or are we going to have to get all new windows?
We're only doing work on the window part on the front facade of the building.
Okay.
So you'll see the windows are being updated on the front facade. Yeah.
Bill, you said you got the bids in for 460.
Mm-hmm.
What was the budget on that? Did that come in as a number you were happy to see or sad to see?
We're slightly under budget. Yeah. And that figures a little bit of a moving target. It'd be 460 to 470, depending on when they pressure wash how much mortar blows out of the building. So.
I can't thank you enough for all your hard work on this. I know at every venture there, and Delin, and I know you and the Parks Authority have worked hard for this. So be that close. I'm really proud of you guys.
I just want to emphasize, you know, all of the work that's gone into this so far really has been because, you know, Bill's led the way on this committee. He's a little humble, I think, when he talks about how much has gone into bringing, you know, $1.4 million in for this project. To be able to successfully bid out Phase One and be under budget, I think, is a tremendous achievement. And, you know, a lot of that is owed to Bill. A lot of that is owed to Josh Cornberg and Delin. You know, the committee has done incredible work in the short amount of time that they've been charged with this project. So I would give them a round of applause just for that. Hopefully, we can have some sort of groundbreaking on Phase One before the end of the year.
Yeah, we will.
I think this really, I'll just add, sets the tone for any future development. I mean, public-private partnerships, I think, are the way forward in being innovative as a city and as we look for some of these major projects like this where the community's coming together and has a lot of buy-in. I think it's been really successful, and thanks for pioneering that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we have our union amendment, and we have the president of the local 558, Joe Hurt. Good evening, Paul.
Good evening. Thank you, guys. I'm basically just going to answer any questions if anybody has any. I've sent the amendment and along with, like, all the rationale by way of email. If anybody has any questions, I'll.
It's pretty much just housekeeping. It's something that needs to be done because of the parity clause. And to get there, I think it's like Kenny's mistake to their base, and we really need to get that bait. Everything goes off their base, so we just have to make sure that is.
Also, while we're still talking about it, we were robbed on the chili cook-off at the fieldhouse.
Three chilies to one was real unfair.
Spot him back there.
Three chilies to one.
I have to say, I'm a fire department guy, but it's not the police department's fault that they went out and got the sponsorships needed to make it happen.
I want to see where the dollars came from, huh? We need to audit that.
Transparency.
Yeah, come on.
The sponsors out, we still beat them handling.
So does council have any questions or anything for the amendment? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second approval of the union amendment. Any further discussion?
How do we do this procedurally? Is this just a one-time fix? We're all good?
I think Vicki had done the homework on that to see how it has been done historically, so.
Yeah, we did this before with our contract. Remember when we did, had to change the number on the apparatus for the state reasons?
Right.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Thanks.
Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. And we'll move on to Dave Simpson. You're giving us an update on the, just pass it on down. Oh, past these on down, too. On the sponsorship program. Good evening.
Appreciate everybody having me out this evening. Familiar faces. Basically here tonight to give everybody a snapshot report of where we are standing with the current city partners program. For those of you that are familiar with the program, it's a partnership program that we've created that enables us to connect with businesses throughout the local, community, regional, and even now national level to bring in sponsorship support for events, parks that we have throughout season to season. So a little over 32 months ago, the program was pretty much created or revamped, if you would. In your reports that you have, basically gives you a snapshot of numbers from the start, February, March of 2015, when the program was originally launched, into current year-to-date, and then on even into 2018, and what we're already starting to contract for 18. The exciting piece of this front page of the snapshot report that we're looking at is if you look at '15, '16, '17, and '18 in your left-hand column, progressively '15 through '17, we've grown in overall sponsorships. '15, a little slow out of the gate, developing the program, getting it up, moving on its feet where it needed to be. '16, some pretty substantial growth from an overall standpoint. And '17, even more growth with the kickoff to '18. As of matter of fact, just the end of last week, that number of 36.3 has moved to a number of 48.750. So the growth for '18 is already happening. Pretty much changes day to day, which is exciting to see. Overall, too, in your right column next to that and your column following it, it kind of gives you a good snapshot breakdown of the overall cash sponsorships, and then our overall in-kind sponsorships. Cash being physical cash dollars that companies and businesses, individuals fund events with. In-kind being traded services primarily for, event-related services primarily for what we need. Production services, media, radio advertisement, TV in some events that we work with, and then even some inflatable light-up type things. Lowe's this year and last year both partnered with us and provided so many dollars towards the light-up Jeffersonville event, towards lights and holiday type stuff for that event. So dollars that we wouldn't have to pull out of our budget for the event that helps up offset the cost. All those being budget-related to the specific event that we have. So somewhere in the ballpark now with the change as of last week in the area of, what I've calculated is to be $701,234.51, which I'm pretty proud of. A lot of support from Paul, our Parks Director, our Parks Authority, and our city council from the beginning of this. Whether it meet with Ed and Lisa, Matt and Nathan from day one, and then a lot of you that have come in since have kind of learned what the program's about, and you see what it's doing when you come down to events, week in, week out, and you see the city partners and the businesses that are coming out to support the community. So we're pretty excited about that. I will note, in red on that page, it does list some of these numbers include, are all total committed sponsorships. But note, some dollars are still outstanding and being collected. For instance, 2017, we still have outstandings as some of our partners and sponsors are on terms, which means when they contract with us at the start of the year, the start of the prior year, they pay quarterly, or they pay on a monthly cycle, really because they're giving us funds to help us and trade for marketing dollars to help them. We work with them on how their funds, you know, come in. Some choose to pay that overall right out of the gate. Some choose and ask if they can pay that over a monthly or a quarterly type deal. So we do still have some outstanding for '17. In our '17 this year, we have faced some setbacks with regards to overall dollars brought in. That meaning with the cancellation of our Steamboat Nights event this year and our cancellation of our Ice Shrink, those funds that we had already brought in and were contracted for the 2017 season, we had to adapt. So we had to get with these partners that we have, break the news to them that they wouldn't get their marketing out of the event for this season, and give them the option at that time to either receive those dollars back for reconsideration for '18, or to go ahead and move those dollars and those figures into '18 if they would like to support us for those events in '18. And roughly 99% of those partners for those specific events have recommitted and signed denims to recommit those dollars to '18, which is really exciting for us. It means a true partnership that they're in it for the long haul and that they're interested in growing with us. So we're excited about that. The rest of this data from this page on through the next page kind of gives you a general rundown of just estimated year-to-date, or estimated year-to-year special events budgets, just rounding. It goes into some of the success that we've had with the event. You know, in the big picture for us, what we like to see is that the program is showing, effectively showing our partners, their return on investment that they're working to achieve with their dollars. You know, these businesses and partners of ours could very easily be putting their dollars, marketing into commercial advertisement and billboards, into radio advertisement, postcards, that type of stuff. But what they like the most out of it is the community engagement that they're getting out of it. They love being at the events. CCBCC, which is Coca-Cola Consolidated, here just out of Louisville, is committed to us through 2018. And that'll put them at an estimated, well, no, right at, well, I say estimated because they do some other stuff with us as well, over $80,000 in sponsorship since 2015. So we're very excited with them. Papa John's, which is the support they've given us for the fieldhouse from Bill and Josh, and then their team's work has been fantastic through John Schneider. But they, in addition, year-to-year, through their events budget and their marketing budget, have been our Jeffco's Country sponsor and a seasoned vending sponsor for us over the last three years since the start of the program and continue to get on board year-to-year, spending somewhere between $15,000 and $17,000 a year, putting them in a high category as well. So the fact that they're coming back tells us that the program's working, that they like what they're getting out of it. They like the dollars they're spending. They like the trade. The overall goal is for us to reach people with their brand, product, or service, and we feel like that that's working. So we say we have an effective system that's working and growing while building our reputation throughout the marketplace as a great marketing avenue for businesses at the local, regional, and the national level. We're reaching in a lot of different ways that we originally didn't think outside the box on and understand that it would even be possible to do. We were reaching originally for product and brand messaging for customers. But as we got in front of businesses and networked with these businesses, we started understanding the need for other things to put in front of the community. Kelly Services is now going on their third year with us as they grow, and they're reaching for an entire different reason than what a Coca-Cola or a Papa John's or a Denzinger Dental would be reaching for. They're reaching for recruitment reasons. They're reaching to find jobs for people in the community and/or for employers in the community that they work through. So they've become a huge holiday season platinum naming sponsor for us, and you'll see their name on a lot of stuff going through the Holiday Lightup Parade and Event this year. So those are things that we're really seeing that are working, that we're glad to see. Examples of leading brands, you've got a brand, a leading brand sheet on there that just gives you a snapshot of some. Coca-Cola, we've named Miller Lite, Budweiser, and North Vernon Beverage is working with us with Abbey Road now, which is super exciting. So we get both of those companies stepping to the table to help us year-to-year. Amazon, which has been a huge deal maker for us from '16 going into '17, and as we talk with them, even growing even more with them year-to-year. And the list goes on. Brown Foreman, we introduced spirits to our River Stage series last year and some of our other events. And Brown Foreman has stepped to the plate with us, along with some of their competitors. Kroger Company has stepped to the plate. Franklin, Cool Chevrolet, Four Roses, AML Inc., in a big way with Abbey Road last year, which was exciting. Child Place, Clark Memorial every year, Lowe's Home Improvement, Thorntons, and many more. I urge you to go to our city partners website, our webpage on the City Parks page, and take a glance through at our mission statement, what we're there to do, all of our partners that support us, what they mean to us, and what their goals are as well. So Paul had mentioned to you guys a few weeks back, we've been talking about, within parks, about ideas and momentum around growth. You know, you see something working well and the engines turning, partners responding, and liking the community outreach that's coming in to help support community events. And we feel like we're at a stage where we want to consider and have the council's support and the city's support on growing the program. Many successful, and in this packet, as you read into pages three and four, you'll see some examples of other successful teams, one of the biggest in the area for events, and how they do it, and what they draw, and how many folks are going in day-to-day, week-to-week, throughout the year, leading up to the event or events that they put on to help generate the dollars they're generating. And there's usually multiple people as they grow those programs. They go in to make up those teams to help support them. Only one person can do so much, and I'm here to do it. And I've proven that from day one and the start of 2015. But what we're asking for is, is give us the legs. Because when I'm contracting and when I'm meeting benefits and meeting the return on investment for the sponsors at events and activating at events, I can't be in the field selling at that same time. So we're looking for bodies, and we're looking to maybe have a team put together, a discussion with council members, some ideas as to how, moving forward, we can take these numbers from $270,000, $350,000 a year and turn them into those 1.1 and those $2 million outlooks to help cover, excuse me, completely offset our events budget in a big way. And I think that as we grow, with the bodies to do it, and that constant person in the field doing nothing but prospecting, nothing but selling, and us overseeing that and doing it as well, that that team of people is going to be more powerful than just one. As we grow, we'd like to see that. So this is something we'd like to be considered. Some of that data in here is how we think that would look and how it would be shaped, and what their responsibilities would be, is kind of built into this as well, just for reading material and for you to understand. And then some of the examples, again, that we put out as to what it takes to make up that successful full team is in there as well. And we'd love for you to take a look through that. So attached in here as well, we pitched some information in here about stewardship program. In the past, probably a year and a half to two years, we've had a few folks come to us from our partners program currently that we're working under, and they've said, how else can we get involved? How else can we get our massive teams involved? How can CCBCC get their thousands of employees involved? How can Amazon and their resources and their employees get more involved rather than just monetarily? So I sat down with Paul on a few occasions and said, what can we do? What do we need? And we know in spring, summer, fall, winter, we can use help cleaning up parks. And we know during events, we can use volunteers to help man the inflatables and to help clean up after big events and to help, you know, beautify green space. And the list goes on. So with that being said, we've put it to the test in a couple of occasions. Paul worked with Amazon a year ago on bringing some Amazon folks in to help clean up some park space, which was a huge help to us. Southeast Christian, just in the last year, has become a city partner of ours. And for Easter at Vising this year, they brought 40-plus volunteers out to help scatter eggs before the event and to clean up after the event and to run inflatables. So something that once took four and five and six and 10 Parks employees and maintenance staff to do nonstop until midnight the night before, hours on the day before, now all of a sudden turned into 50-something, 60-something-plus individuals helping bring this community event together. They provided the same thing for Halloween downtown this year with running the inflatables for those that are there running booths and just doing general candy watches on booths that are running low on candy and just doing all sorts of volunteer services for us that we could use. In addition to providing our inflatables for the events, and then they're going to work with us on volunteer programs for our Easter event and volunteer programs for us on into our 2018 season. So there are just a couple of examples. CCBCC's come to us. Lowe's and Home Depot, we've talked to about maybe doing kid build-it workshops at events, going into season rather than just doing them at their facilities. Other community banks and schools want to get involved in this way. So it's a whole different way to reach. And what we're kind of naming it to this point is Jeffersonville Park Stewardship Program, because it's partners already that we have that are asking how else they can put their resources to help. And it's kind of how it's building to this point. Some of the ideas we have, and we'd like to hear from you all as we move forward, if you have ideas on it, are just what they are. Volunteer staffing at River Stage, people to run inflatables, those are ideas that we've had. We're talking gate guards, event cleanup, trash pickup, restroom, green room cleanup, event duties at some additional events that, you know, anything that we can think of that we can use stewardship and volunteer bodies for. Parks and green space was another big piece of how we can offset dollars associated with going in to clean up that, to groups and companies that want to be involved and want to have a park close to them that their staff goes out and helps clean up year-to-year during a season to a season. So the end goal there is, is just bring. So, the end goal there is, is just bringing the community together. We feel like that's what it's doing. That's what this partnership and this city partnership program's kind of been built on, and that's what we want to continue. We feel like the stewardship program can kind of be an arm of that and continue to bring those groups, families, and community together. So, I'll pretty much wrap up. I wanted to throw a couple of things your way in regards to, we've got a recruitment video that's coming out that we've put together with Pro Media Company for going into 2018 season. They've shot a couple of different city partners of ours on video that are talking about what this city partnership means to them financially as a company, what it means to them to get involved in the community, and how important it is to their business. And then we've got other city partners that gave quotes and told Pro Media in writing what it means to them and how important it is to the business and to their community. So, we're excited about that. When that's finished, prior to launch for '18, I'll send that out. I've got your emails. I'd love for you to see it and see what's going on and the excitement in their voice and the quotes that they've put together. I think it's a great, great piece for Jeffersonville and what it means and what this program means to the companies that are involved in it, that are putting money into it, and to our city, and to our community, and to the community as a whole. Just a couple I'll read, because it's exciting to me, and I love hearing it when they talk about it. Southeast Christian, connecting to one another is their big piece, a part of their, second part of their mission statement. It was, it's Bill Weedman that said, you know, when we asked him, "Has your establishment improved or changed since becoming a city partner?", and quote, he says, "Our changing and improving involves the healthy nature of what is taking place. Serving our community and meeting, serving the citizens of Jeff is a practical way to live out the second part of our mission statement to connect to one another." And if you read our mission statement, which is in your packet, it's really what it's about. It's about bringing businesses and community groups together to support the community, because that's what it is. When you see the smiling faces down at the River Stage, you see all the kids at Halloween Downtown at Vising Park, and the things that we're doing for the community through parks, through the city, it's really what it's all about. And you'll see several more. I've got a bunch here. I won't read through them all tonight, because I know we've got a long night ahead. But I wanted to read his, because I thought that was important. And most, when you see them, when you see this video, all are really along that same line. It's all about community, being involved, the message that those companies want to put out to the community and how they want to be involved in the community. So, with that said, if you have any questions with regards to the program, where we're at, where we're going?
I am. I'll just start. First of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight, and I really commend you for the work that you're doing. It's not an easy job. I come from a sales and fundraising background myself, so I know the challenges that come with soliciting sponsorships and securing some of those things. I was just curious, and I understand you might not have exact figures, but generally, between your repeat business and your business development or new business, do you have a percentage or approximately what?
We don't currently have a percentage, because a lot of ours, it seems to be, I don't want to say year-to-year, but it is. It's basically what works for them from a marketing standpoint, from an overall growth standpoint. We know we're seeing growth. From a maintaining standpoint, I feel like we're getting to a point where what we're contracting and what we're getting on agreements each year, it's a big bucket of customers, if you would, partners, if you would, that have a big bucket of benefits that need to be met through the season. We don't have a percentage at this point. Right now, it's as much as we can grow it, we want to grow it. With the parameters that we understand that there's only so much room within it that we can necessarily grow it, without watering down the benefits that are there for the partners that we're trying to create the return on investment for. We have been asked that question at times, which is from our partners, which is, "How many can sponsor at the naming position of an event?" Well, for naming positions, it's one, but for our gold, silver, on down into our bronze levels sponsorship packages, we can take, you know, up to five, up to 10 even, until we get to a point like we did this year when we spoke with Bill and the Parks Authority, where it was, wow, we need to, we need to take the LED screen sponsors logos that are up for Jeffco's Country and River Stage, and we need to split it into two or three LED pages, because the logos are getting too small to put there, and we want to make sure the folks in the lawn can see, and it's more impactful for the sponsors. And so, that's the growth, the growing pains that we're having. It's, we're having growth, and at this point, you know, what do we do to make sure that they're getting the most exposure out of their dollar, the most return on their investment from those type things? So, as we get them, we're adapting to them. We do lose some, because it may not be in the cards for them in the second year, but with that loss, we look to regain two and three, you know, as many as we can bring in to help support the events that we try to put on or free to the community.
I think from my perspective, from an administrative point of view, I'm trying to get a sense of, as you mentioned, you know, building a team here, adding a position, how much of your time is spent maintaining existing accounts versus going out and trying to gain new business?
Right.
Because that percentage then tells me a lot about where maybe our opportunities for growth might be.
Right.
So, that's where my question was going.
Yeah, and we've got that built into my, to my performance scale and to what time I've got to dedicate to what. A lot of, during peak season, a lot of it goes into maintaining. Once the contract's signed and we understand, the agreement's set, and we understand what we're going, what we have to do for each individual partner, which each one is different and what they need and what they want at events, it goes into building that for them. It goes into working with their PR team, maybe out of another market that's putting together the 30-second commercial spot that'll show, how often do we run it, how much can we run it, and then I'm working with our production team with, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And that's just one aspect. That's just the commercial things that we've put in front of ourselves in the last year or two with our LED screen, which helps them, but it's another piece we have to manage. And then logos, and the proper logo, and to the proper company for print and for ad and for paper and then onstage presence. So, once season starts, River Stage kickoff night, Abbey Road even now, a lot of my time goes into creating the day before the event and the week before the event, what needs to be perfect at the event for those brands, which leaves less time for me to be doing what I was doing in early 2015, late 2015, and even '16, which was boom, 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 just hitting the floor, running, knocking doors down and selling sponsorships. That's where, that's where having that person, once my time goes into activation mode, into creating mode, into getting things ready for these partners to assure their repeat with us, it'd be awesome to have this person here that's doing nothing but prospecting, hitting the doors. And then when my time's not there, like here, I'm, the start, although it started for the '18 season, is about to happen in a big way, because we're recreating packages for '18 and what the lineups are going to be for '18 to put in front of the sponsors. That's my best sell time. So, now's sell time, but come May, June, and even earlier now with Abbey Road, then it's activation time. Then there's a lot less time to be able to put, and I'd be happy to sit down with you all and kind of show you how that model looks, a lot less time to put into sales, 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 and to grow this to that figure that I'd like to get to. It'd be fantastic to have that person that, when I'm in activation mode or in creation mode, that this person can, you know, come in and report, "How did your 10 calls go today? How did your 15 calls today? What contracts do we have? What do we need to do next to put these, this new partner into play?" It's just an exciting part of growth. Again, something that we created kind of out of, I think, 2013 and '14. To my knowledge, there was little, if any, dollars coming in to offset events budgets. Some, I believe, maybe, but how much and how much repeat, I'm just not sure it was there. So, these numbers are super exciting to me, and now I'm looking at, man, I want to take these to the neck. I'm going to take them to as high as I can take them, as far as I can take them, because the growth of the events and continuing to do what we're doing, I think, is important. But support would be fantastic.
And then, just so that I understand, I really appreciate the spreadsheet that you put together. I think most people in the council know I love a good spreadsheet, so I appreciate it.
Sure.
But just so that I understand it clearly, so for some of the sponsorships that, I don't want to say fell through, but because of the cancellation of certain events were maybe pushed to next year?
Right.
Are those incorporated in the 2018 dollars, or are they?
No, they're not. Most of them have, except for, per se, one, most of them have either paid and recommitted. Matter of fact, about 90-something-plus percent of them have paid, funds already in, but recommitted on an additional, but yeah, so those numbers aren't even in the '18.
Okay. And so, the ones that, I do see that there's maybe like 50% refund or refund request?
Right.
So, are those dollar amounts not included in the total then for 2017, or?
No, they are. They're included in the '17 total.
Okay. I think it was just two. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, the two pays. And matter of fact, in, since this report was created, the '75 has completed, so it's at zero now, which is one of our major partners. And then the fifth, not the 50 below it, but there's one other 50, or no, 40, the 40% paid, has moved to like 85. They've got one payment left, and they'll be complete.
Okay.
And then our, one of our majors is still due, but we're working with them pretty much daily to get that cleared.
Yeah, that's going to be my next question. So, I see they've committed to next year as well.
Yes, they're on '17 and '18, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all for your support. Oh, and I did put in there, sorry, I put in there a referral sheet at the back. Those of you that have been with us for a while understand what that is. I've showed it to Parks Authority, too. Some of our biggest partners and partners that understand what we're doing have been referred to us by another company in networking, and everybody here knows what networking's all about. If you have somebody that's trying to grow a business, that has a business, that has something that they're trying to get off the ground, they want to be in front of the community and support the community at the same time, use that referral. Pick up the phone, email me. I'm easy to get, I'm right here in the Parks Department, and I'd love to talk to you about them. All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, Dave.
We've got Heather for an ordinance to transfer certain funds within the same department. And while she's coming up to the podium, if you look under, it's the third one down under the safety, the transfer, the 3,500, it's not going to be going into equipment. It's for fire extinguishers. It's going to be, the head will be safety supplies. She'll clear up that paperwork for us for next meeting.
Yeah, you'll probably have to make a motion to amend the ordinance and then to approve it after that. Yes.
Just want to walk us through it then?
Sure. Chief, Heather, if you could. Do you want to talk about your transfer request?
If they have any questions about mine. The one on the top, basically, we had computer software, but we needed to buy hardware, so we have to move it out of a service into a capital. So, we are opening up our 400-series capital that we hadn't had previously under a new software hardware instead of software maintenance, which is a service to the actual purchase of a item under capital. The second, we're moving into equipment to buy some rescue equipment replacement for our Engine 44, which is the station out toward Charlestown.
Thank you, Chief.
The other stuff, I think, is Amirs, the extinguishers, yeah?
Yes. Amirs was the fire extinguishers that go in the police cars. And then also, the last one is for medical supplies for the animal shelter.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to amend 2017 OR 75 to reflect the safety supplies.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to amend 2017 OR 75. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and carries. So, now I will.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Got it on which readings?
First and second, sorry.
So, I got a motion and a second to pass the amended 2017 OR 75 and the first and second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Heather, you're still up. We are on to an ordinance of additional appropriation, and the public hearing will be at our 11:20 meeting.
Which one's up first?
The one with the sanitation, landfill, and the tourism bond.
Okay. Landfill one is for sanitation department, and that's for 79, 400. And then the tourism bond is the million dollars that we got through the tourism, and that's just to appropriate so that now we're able to spend that money.
That's the bond that's going to the Arts District and to the museum?
Yes.
And this is number 76?
Mm-hmm.
Is the motion to approve 17 OR 76 on the first and second. I have a question.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second to pass 2017 OR 76 and the first and second. Any further discussion, questions?
What was the landfill? I mean, was that just how much they were over this year?
Do you remember when we had that workshop in the beginning of the year, and they said that the landfill, that fees have been going up, there's been a lot of issues, and they were, they knew that they were going to be short anyhow, but I don't know if you've seen in our claims list throughout the year, our landfill fees have gone up.
Have we accounted for that in the 2018?
I believe so.
I don't remember that particular, okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
Fantastic.
Previously, we kind of went back and forth with the idea of going across the river because the fees over here were so high. I don't know if that's practical with tolling now, but I know at one point, we were going across the river to the landfill.
I think they do, because I know they have tolls on those trucks.
I know that, you know, when we started doing that, the landfill came back and said, "Wait a minute, you know, let's talk about this." If that's a position we can go back to.
Not sure.
Negotiate.
Yeah, and that's all, that's the administration.
Yeah, I mean, $80,000 is a sizable amount.
Well, that might be all that went up, but they were short to begin within their budget to cover their, throughout the year. Any other questions? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Now, we're at to our.
Was that first and second?
First and second.
Okay.
We're on to additional appropriation, which the public hearing will be 11:20, and I did give a handout to go along to kind of explain this request. This is for the Unsafe Building Fund, that they have invoices now, as you can see on that paper, outstanding invoices of $10,000 to $15,000, so their request is $30,000, just the work they have. And this also is for not just the takedown of buildings, but also the work that we do in the homes file of liens.
Yes. It all gets reimbursed through the tax lien process.
Do we have any questions for Heather? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve 17 OR 77, the first and second.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR 77, the first and second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Larry is not here, so we are moving on to the department heads, and I do have their requests for Paul. And then also, Les wants to address, but Eric, did you have anything you wanted to say at department heads either?
Yes.
Okay, I'll call you then. Okay.
Thank you.
Can you call?
First, I'd just like to say, Dave is doing a great job with the city partner program. He's a hard worker. He's out every day making calls. He's out following up on the calls, following up at events to make sure those sponsors are getting what they're getting and getting what they're supposed to be getting, and I want to say we're very happy with the work he's doing where we're at this point with the city partner program. Secondly, I want to thank you guys for helping out at the Halloween Downtown Event. It was another successful year, even with the rain and cold issues this year. It was still a very successful event. We had thousands of kids and families that we took care of, and thank you for your part in that. Also, thanks for your part in the work on the budget. I know it's not easy, it's not a fun process, but I appreciate what you've done, and we are getting excited about 2018 and some of the things we have coming up and that you've helped provide that through our budget. Now, the bad side of that is, we have a couple of projects that we don't have money for. So, I'm here just to go over those projects with you very briefly, to tell you what we have and why we don't have money, because they're large dollar items. So, I'm hoping that you guys might have some input and some ideas on how we can, we can do these things. The first thing is our swimming pool. The swimming pool has a zero depth area, which is a baby pool area. And there is a play feature in that area that has been falling apart for the past four or five years. Every year, we'll put Band-Aids on it to make it safe and make it work. And we're just about at the end of the road with that play feature. We've gotten some quotes here, and they range anywhere from $189,000 on up to $333,000 for a new play feature. There's different styles and pieces that go along with that. And then there's one quote, just to remove the old one and put nothing back in its place, and that's $13,996. I know that's the cheaper way to go, the least expensive way to go, but I think we lose a lot if we lose that play feature. You know, when kids come to the pool, they not only like the water, but they like the splash, they like the slides, they like the climbing up and down the apparatuses. So that play feature is very important to our success of our pool. Our pool is unique because it has the swimming lanes and the diving boards that some of the other pools don't have in the area. And that's what I tell everybody, how we can compete with the new pool at the New Aldmei site, at the new pool at Clarksville, at the reopening of Kentucky Kingdom, is we have some things that they don't have, and that's why people continue to come. But one thing that we don't want to do without is a kids' play feature. So that was the first item. Like I said, $333,000 all the way down to $189,000. So looking for some special project funding and some special project ideas from you. We had three quotes on that. The third one could not bid, but the other two did bid. So I'm not here tonight looking for money, just some ideas on how we can get money.
Paul?
Yes?
You're saying quotes and you're saying bids, which?
Okay.
Need to clarify. What are we talking? Do you have quotes or do you have bids?
I have three quotes.
Quotes, okay.
Yeah. The second project is Duffy's dredging. I got pricing on that this year. It was anywhere from $72,000 to $80,000 to dredge Duffy's. We haven't dredged since 2015, and we have gotten a handful of complaints this year. The dredging causes it to be difficult for boats to come in and out of the launch area and out of the docks. We have about 10 or 12 docks at Duffy's Landing that are hard to use because the sludge is so thick in those dock areas. So we need to find a way to come up with some funds to take care of that. And you can tell with the size of these quotes, we don't have it in our normal budget to do it. If we were wanting to do this out of our standard or normal budget, we'd have to start cutting some things. We'd have to cut some river stage events. We'd have to cut some of our sporting events. We just don't have the money to do. We work with the Parks Authority to fine tune that budget and stay in what I guess is called a budget neutral budget. So anyway, we just don't have the money lying around to do these things. Four or five years ago, when I first started, there was a fund in our budget called Open Spaces. It started with a million dollars. Each year, we started taking money out of it. Now it's down to $0. We went from a million in 2012 to zero in 2017, 2018. So it would be nice to have a fund like that so we can do some of these special projects. There's a couple of other special projects that I have on the horizon, but we won't talk about that tonight. So anyway, that's what I have, those two special projects that I need some help with funding ideas. Or we just don't, we're just not in the Duffy's dredging business anymore because I don't have in my budget to pay for it. Maybe we, I don't know what our options are, but right now, that's where we're at. I'll take any questions.
Are you saying on the higher end scale, if you add those two together, it'd be $413,000?
Let's see, let's say $333,000 and $80,000. I'm sorry, the highest bid with, excuse me, highest quote for my second quoter was $369,000, the highest quote for my dredging. And again, dredging's not gonna happen until next year, so I'm gonna have to go through the quote system again. But it was $80,000, so 440.
So Paul, do you have, I'm sure you're working with the Parks Authority on this bill, chime in. Do you have a certain piece of equipment in mind that you're getting quotes on? Is that what you're doing? Or you narrowed it down to?
Are those quotes comparable? I mean, are they comparable features?
Yes and no. I could show you pictures. Some of them have two slides on them, some of them have one slide, some of them have no slides. Some of them have eight spray features, some of them have six spray features. So they all have different things. But the cheap, the least expensive item on here is just about eight single items that are spread out throughout the area there. They're not one big climbing apparatus. It's a combination piece. They're like a spray area here and a climbing apparatus here. And so anyway, that's the $189,000 item.
So the two numbers that you gave us are really a range, and there's not just two amenities that are being considered. It's a whole spectrum of features. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, there's the, there's a play feature and there's Duffy's dredging. Are you separating those two out?
Right, I'm sorry. So on this, for the swimming pool feature, you're saying the lowest is $189,000 and the highest is $369,000?
Yes.
And that's, is that a spectrum based on two companies? Because I'm hearing like the very lowest is eight separate pieces, but then there's all these different combinations we can do that go up to $369,000.
That is one quote. One company quoted six different options.
Okay.
One was a high option, and there's several in the middle, and one of the low option. The second quoter is the $369,000. They just gave one quote.
I see. Okay.
And the third didn't respond. Did that answer your question, Dustin?
Yes. If I'm reading this correctly, you have 1.5 million, $1,553,883 in your fund, in the park fund. Your target reserve is $353,954. So it seems that you could, if you look at the highest bid that you got, if you took that out of the fund, the park fund, you would still be over a million dollars.
Which fund is that again, that has a million?
Plus?
The surplus. Heather, can you help me out here?
What you have the surplus in the?
Park Fund?
It's account balance.
Right.
Yeah.
The account balance, the unappropriated balance. So they're telling me he's got a million dollars.
Going back to what he mentioned about open space, when the money's there, it's spent, you know, and it.
Okay.
And really, these are the kind of needs we gotta try to manage and plan for because we continue to expand our parks and our amenities, but maintenance is always the thing that'll get you. You know, it's always nice to build something new and get something new, but then five, six, seven years down the road, we gotta try to fix it. And then that really comes back and ends up costing a lot of money.
I'd like to sit down with you, Paul, and possibly Bill, because you're on Parks Authority or any other council that we'd like, you can have four.
Okay.
And kind of look at these play features. I'd like to see, I don't know if Parks Authority, have you seen the different play features? They may have a recommendation or not.
Sure.
Try to get, narrow down our number. You're kind of full range here, and we got different, you know.
I'll just say that I, sorry, I mean, go ahead. I'll just say that, Paul, I really appreciate you coming here tonight and, first of all, telling us of these things. A lot of the time, the requests that we get are, hey, this is an emergency, has to happen right now. We need the appropriation. So I appreciate that you are thinking a little bit in terms of the year coming ahead and coming to us with these numbers. So I think there's something that we can work, work towards.
To get to the dredging.
Would you like to set up that meeting before the Parks Authority meeting? We meet in a small group and then go to Parks Authority?
Yes.
We've got, I think, three weeks before our next Parks Authority meeting, so.
Throw me out some dates and put us.
That's great.
Is anybody else that would like to meet with us?
Is that the 27?
Yes.
Yeah, he'll throw out some dates before that.
Yeah, I'd be interested in attending. If she'd be available that day.
Great.
Do you add her to the, and I got a question about the dredging, Paul.
Yes.
Is there certain times of year that that has to be done or can only be done, or do you have?
Yeah, there's a spawning season that we have to avoid, the spawning season. So it's, I believe it runs through May, so I think it's after May is when we can do the dredging.
Because I know that Duffy's, you know, it is in re, they put their boats in and out. But I also know that our River Patrol is having some issues. Of course, we have some more in here that.
Yeah.
I know, received some concerns from different ones on the River Patrol that they're having a hard time getting their boat in and out. And for emergency purposes, I don't know if that affects, Mr. Kevin?
Yeah, he's one of the phone calls I received about the dredging problem up there, complaints from.
Can you come up to the microphone for a second? I just want to ask you a question real quick. With the dredging, I know we have a certain time because of the spawning, but my concern isn't this dredging. You and I have talked about this, too. You're having some issues in getting the boat, because the River Patrol, in and out.
Not just the River Patrol, a lot of boats, all.
Well, I know, but my concern is for if somebody needs help in that river.
Right.
Is there a certain time, because, you know, we're looking at these play features and all that, and that's important, too. But this dredging is important. Is there a certain time before?
I think it's June 23rd is what they're saying that, and I can't remember the, what it is that they can't dredge for up until that point. But that's the magic date every year that they can start dredging from that point forward, so.
I wouldn't necessarily want to dredge during rainy season, right?
Yeah.
I don't think that sounds right.
It's like a two-month period. It starts in April and goes to June where you can't do it. So we could do it early, like in February or March, or we can do it late in June. I think the earlier the better because you got people using it in May and June. They're gonna complain and have problems getting in and out of the docks.
So if you don't need to dredge until next year, we can kind of, I'm trying to see which one you consider both together as a priority? Or one or the other?
They're both following around the same time.
Okay.
Pool opens in May. Love to have a new play feature in there before the pool opens. And the spawning season, I think, starts in April, so maybe early February, depending on the weather. We could do the, the dredge.
Most of your pleasure craft don't go in until, you know, after thunder, you know, after April, May.
I would say you're on Derby.
Yeah, Derby, yeah, right, right, so.
But like I said, it's preferred doing earlier because of the emergency, getting your boat in and out.
But it's something, we talked, we've talked about getting it on a plan maybe every other year, see how that works. But it's really bad right now. I mean, all summer, I mean, we've got some boaters out here. I know that one of the firemen has a boat. He can probably attest to it as well that.
We've got some big boats.
Right.
He's got a big boat. My little boat even had trouble this year. I'm new, but.
If you did a particular thing to the dock, it would prevent us from having to do that again? Or is it something that is particular to all docks?
I don't think so. The only suggestion we received is that if we go down farther east and dredge out a little east of it, then it'll take more time for that to float down into the dock area. But in the years past, we'd started right with the first dock and went all the way to the ramp, and just that area was dredged. So a year, year and a half later, it was filling up again. So we might get an extra year out of it if we go a little bit farther. But there's no way of keeping it out that I know of. Unless we build some type of.
Of a wall or something, maybe, yeah. And I don't think the Corps of Engineers is gonna allow that, so, yeah.
Yeah, we have to build a wall.
Yeah.
I love the fact that you said that.
Is there any more dredging that the city is already undertaking? Are we, is that on the schedule anywhere else along the river?
We don't currently do it anywhere else, but I've had some suggestions about doing it down at Fisherman's Wharf and down near the river stage. I don't know that it's as bad there as it Duffy's, but we may eventually have to do some there. And then also, somebody suggested that we go and dredge all the way down to the Hain property from the ramp all the way down and open that area up and clean it up some. It's not that there's a lot of boaters that come in there, but it is full of.
You could, though. I mean, you've got that, you could put.
Yeah, clean it out. We could put some more docks in down there. But there's no other place in the city that we'd do dredging.
Paul, you sent out an email, and we'll get that meeting set up.
Okay.
Thanks again, Paul.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Kevin.
Chief Hedrick?
I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. Before Councilman Zee went on vacation or out of town, he and I would like to set up with you and maybe two other council members on a meeting to do the best we can on figuring cost of firefighters on an annual basis and of how we can put that together. So I'd like to touch base with you maybe tomorrow on how we can get that set up. And I don't know who else would want to be involved in that. Today, the, between the police and the Fire Department, we had a bridge dedication. I know some of you made it. I know Scotty and Lisa were there. I don't know if you did, if anyone else was there, I miss you. But it was, it was a neat thing, and redevelopment paid for that. It's a really neat thing, joining the two, and it's also for the fallen heroes. It's a pretty neat thing. Come by and check it out. Paul, your guys did an outstanding job of getting the site ready. They worked for a week on trying to get everything looking good, and the weather wasn't perfect, so we appreciate that.
Did the Green Team do the landscaping around the memorial? It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Please pass on. My gratitude for that is gorgeous.
And that bridge, it serves a purpose, of course, of us getting back and forth. And the police officers come over and always want some breakfast and things like that. And we send over the donuts, but that's, but it's more use than that. There's other uses. When we have tours of children walking back and forth where they don't have to walk out on 10th Street, it's a great, a great change. And, and, you know, it also kind of symbolizes, as I said today, the departments have never worked closer together since I can remember. And, and we're continuing to build on that. I also wanted to mention, Joe had reminded me, the Christmas party for the local Firefighters Union Administration is December the 9th. That's over at the Union Hall, just right over here.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the Union Hall, December the 9th, which is a Friday, is that right, Joe?
Saturday.
Saturday. The, I think that's the only other thing I had. But I just wanted to mention, and I hadn't forgot about you. I know you were out of town, and then last week we got tied up. I'm sorry.
Were you being in the meeting?
Yes.
And I think naked. But we'll talk, we'll get to go.
Yeah. Another thing that I'm working on, and it's a little more complicated than it is at the first look or the surface, is some comparable cities in Indiana. You can't really take all Class II cities. I don't think you want to compare us to Evansville or South Bend or some, or even Carmel. But we're taking cities that are 10,000 more or 10,000 less in population. It gives us about eight or nine cities to kind of draw off of. And then you also have to be really particular when you start comparing those things because some of those departments supply different services. So it's just not a flat number. But we're working our way through that. We're about 90% done with those, that data. So we're bringing that to our meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Any other questions?
We're good. Thank you. Joe did.
I was just gonna invite you all to the Christmas party, so feel free to bring your families, or we'll have plenty of food and drinks and figure it out.
And cheer, Christmas cheer.
Appreciate it.
And cheer.
And, yeah, bring Christmas. Okay, I think, Mr. Merkley, you want to fill us in on, I think we need to talk about ratifying the agreement with the town of Clarksville?
No, it's nothing to do with the case.
Ah, thank goodness.
I don't know.
Someone's smarter than that.
We hope.
Do you all got mediation on this, please?
No, it's taken three or four years to get this.
Is that all?
This is an agreement that has been in the works probably longer than that, probably close to five years, to address some issues with flood control in Clarksville in reference to some flooding in what I consider old Clarksville. We have reached an agreement that I believe all the parties are happy with. It's an agreement that involves the Flood Control District, the town of Clarksville, the Clarksville Redevelopment Department, and also the city of Jeffersonville. 98% of this has nothing to do with Jeffersonville. However, if you go to page three of the agreement, the agreement does ask or require the city of Jeffersonville to do certain things. It's, there are no financial requirements. The city's not committing any funds. But basically, the city is agreeing to cooperate with Clarksville. As you are fully aware, Clarksville is undertaking a large redevelopment project in the south portion of their city, of the south, what they call the South Clarksville Redevelopment Area. And there may be over a period of time when that development occurs over the next several years that they may be coming back to the city of Jeffersonville for us to help with certain, to cooperate. So we don't have the situation that we had a couple of years ago regarding down at Water Tower Square. For example, there may be some agreements regarding Clarksville maintaining certain areas where the city limits and the town limits come up against each other. We may need to relocate certain right of ways so they're consistent with the town of Clarksville's, relocating underground utilities, and also possibly vacating certain right of ways. If those items would occur, they would, all likelihood, require additional action from the city council here. So I thought it was important that you all be aware of that. The mayor, Flood Control has approved this agreement. The Board of Public Works has approved this agreement. The mayor has signed the agreement on behalf of both entities. I would ask that the council simply make a motion and a second to ratify this agreement with the entities set forth between the Flood Control. with the entities set forth between the Flood Control District, town of Clarksville, the Redevelopment Department of Clarksville, and the city of Jeffersonville. And I think then, once that happens, we can get forward moving on some other important issues, which I would point the council to look at, section, section three, section seven at the top of page three. This agreement, approving this agreement is sort of the first step in moving forward on some very, very important issues for the city of Jeffersonville.
Yeah, that's extremely important, so I will entertain a motion, if you don't have any further questions.
Again, we're not, we're not committing any funds whatsoever, the mayor has signed it, Flood Control's approved it. I just didn't want us to come down two or three, four years down the road, and Clarksville shows up and is asking the council for something, I didn't want you all to be blindsided.
Appreciate that. I will entertain a motion to ratify this agreement.
I'll make a motion to ratify the agreement between city of Jeff, Clarksville, Jeffersonville Flood Control District, town of Clarksville, and the Clarksville Redevelopment Department.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. It's a good step forward. Okay, did we have any public comment?
Oh, none.
None? Okay. Then we will move on to council comments, and we will start with councilperson White.
Thank you. Paul?
Yes.
If you could come up to Pauline again. I just wanted to tell, say that I appreciate all the work that you've done, leading the department, the Parks Department. You all do a great, do a great job.
Thank you.
I participate in all the fun that you all provide, and never have to go to Louisville to have a good time, and to bring family and friends down, and you've really provided, made Jeffersonville a destination point for entertainment. And it, it's a good feeling, and that's, that people have in the city, and there are many more people that appreciate it as well, so I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Your hard work is noticed and appreciated.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Councilperson, that's astounding.
Yeah, you know, I have discussions with a number of people who aren't from here, here in Jeffersonville, but they see us on Live PD, and I really think it'd be good to have a discussion about if that's something we want to continue, and why we do it, and if it makes sense, because from a PR standpoint, a lot of these folks, I mean, it comes across the wrong way, I'm sorry, I mean, it shows we do have some great professional police officers out there, no doubt, but I don't think it shows the best that Jeffersonville has to offer, so I sort of out there as hopefully a chance to discuss, and maybe have some communication regarding the future of our participation in that program. That's all.
Councilperson Young.
I have a few things, a few things. First of all, Veterans Day is coming up this weekend, so I just want to, if we have any veterans in the room, or know of any veterans, to thank them for their service, and I'm sure we will, there are a lot of things going on that day to recognize those members of our community. Also, I had the chance, along with several other council members, to attend the first inaugural police banquet for the Jeffersonville Police Department. It was a fantastic event, and I think it honored our, our police officers very well. They are an excellent force, I mean, there were, there were several other entities that were represented there, and they could not speak highly enough of our police department, so thank you for all of the work that's done there, and every award that was given was rightfully deserved, so was happy to attend. And then I just want to make a comment, tonight, actually during our council meeting, there was a neighborhood meeting in the Oak Park, in Oak Park regarding an ongoing issue with coyotes. I wasn't able to attend, obviously I was here, but there was someone from the animal shelter that was brought in to, to talk on that subject, so I will be following up with some constituents that are at that meeting, just to see what's being done to address, I guess there's been several sightings and some, some damage, and, yeah, in that area, so the residents got together and are discussing it tonight, so.
I actually had a coyote run out in front of me on Thompson Lane when I was leaving my daughter's house in North Haven.
Yeah, so.
So I think there's some complaints in Buttonwood and all throughout North, so they're, they're here.
Yeah, so I'm interested to hear what, what was discussed, and I will fill in council members after I get an update on that meeting, so.
That's all I have tonight, thank you. Councilperson Maikins.
Kim, this year, I believe Jeffersonville Police is participating in No Shade November, is that correct?
Thank you, yes, and about the same token, the fire department is not, so.
Oh.
As a, as a police officer, new for oxygen mask, may I ask?
As a police, as a police officer, I could understand that, that we would have to donate money to grow a beard and they not participate. But to the example, all the police officers had to pay out of pocket to be able to grow a beard, and I think everyone knows, and they're professionals, they're, they're never really allowed to grow a beard, and I think it's a great program, it all goes to shop with the cop, and I think that's all I have.
Councilperson Hawkins.
157 years ago today, Abraham Lincoln was elected president.
Oh, wow.
And I know that we are mere city council people, but, you know, he started with such humble beginnings as well, and always kept his moral compass, and I think we are doing that, and I just, whenever I think of Lincoln, I think of humble beginnings, and I think of, well, us, and not to put us in, I'm not comparing us to Abraham Lincoln, don't misunderstand, but what I'm saying is that I, I think we've all risen to the challenge, that people are doing things for the right reasons, and I hope we continue to do that.
Councilperson Owen.
A few things, I wanted to acknowledge Councilman Webb, who was here for most of our meeting, but he must have slipped out as we started council comments, but a couple other things. Number one, in September, we passed an ordinance putting a moratorium on gas stations for six months. That ordinance specifically says that the planning department is to report to the council by December 1st, a plan to remedy the issues that we had. I don't know that we're going to get a proposal, based on some of the conversations I've had in planning and zoning, so next meeting, I want to bring forward an ordinance repealing the moratorium. I think the moratorium was a good idea, but if we're not going to pursue any type of action to remedy the issues that we had, I don't see reason to bar development for the remainder of the six months. Secondly, wanted to remind you that Clark County Cares is having their week of engagement in January. Been approached about them potentially coming before us and asking for sponsorship. If you recall, the last time they came to us, I think was in 2015, 2016, for 2017, they asked us for $5,000. We ended up giving them, I think, $60,000 for Sam Keonis to come. We paid for his expenses to come and, you know, participate in that, all of the events that came with their program. It was a great benefit. He did a phenomenal job and went above and beyond anything that they ever thought would happen, but they're going to come and ask for that $5,000 sponsorship again, and I think they will be here, maybe either our next, either our next meeting in November or in December. We haven't coordinated yet, but she did ask if they could come, get on our agenda before the end of the year. Looking, Heather, make sure I'm not misspeaking, on the report that you gave us today, on page 18 of 41, it looks like in gaming, we have $20,000 in special projects that we've not tapped into? Page 18? And we haven't spent that? Yes. If that's the case, I would, I will probably ask when they come and present that we appropriate $5,000 for their program out of that 20 before the end of the year, so that we can sponsor them in our 2017 budget. I think that was all. The only other thing, the only other two things, I wanted to see maybe if Mr. Merkley could go back to the administration and ask about our AC unit, that seems to be very noisy in the back of the room.
Already.
Already, already done it, awesome.
That's not like we're on jet tunnel.
That is not by design, although some people may think that.
I've talked with Larry Wallace about that several times, and it's the compressor on that end that's on the roof, and they've had.
Really?
Yeah.
I know it vibrates, it vibrates upstairs.
Yes. And they've had the company, the contractor, in here several times, he was just here a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago on it too, and I heard it, and I was looking to see if it possibly, if it's, when the ceiling tiles were put back in, if maybe something wasn't put back all the way correctly, because that's, it's really been bad the last two meetings, so, yeah, but I do know that they have worked on it, and, because we had the same complaint before.
Okay.
It's to do something with the compressor.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, appreciate you bringing up Clark County Cares, because I was going to bring that up, so I'm glad we're going to be doing that, I'm a member of that, and they're doing some great things, and now that Dr. Yezel has been brought on board with the Health Department, he's really bringing a lot of fresh ideas to the table, and so maybe they can touch on that, I'm going to ask Clark County, maybe they can touch on some of that, to give us the full scope of what's being done in the community. I too is going to thank the Parks Department, especially for that event today at the Heroes Crossing. I know you all worked hard, and worked hard to get that landscape in and all that, and thanks for all your work on the sponsorship, and the, I too got to attend the banquet Friday night, and from start to finish, it was, it was just awesome, to sit back and hear their stories like they put it, and see them receive the rewards, just the pride on their face, and even the pride of everybody that's sitting out there in that audience was just awesome to see. Hand it out, these insurance forms, is there anybody here tonight that needed it that I didn't give to? We can get that turned in, if you need them, there's extras here, and, let's see, Clark County Youth Shelter, we support that every year, I want to remind everybody that this event is, the Clark County Youth Shelter and Family Services will celebrate their 14th Annual Holiday Celebrity Waiter Dinner at 6:00 PM Tuesday, December 5th, in the Knights of Columbus Hall on Market Street in Jeff. And I believe we are supporting them for the, yeah, the 500 is what we usually do, so mark your calendars on that, and if y'all need me to send out a reminder email and all these dates that get thrown at us, I'll be glad to do that. That's all I have, so, can you see that, dates?
Sure, thank you.
And I'm still getting with Kim to set up, I'd like to get that workshop set up on HR so we can discuss all of that, and I will report back as soon as we set up that meeting with, with Paul with the recommendations, I look forward to that, with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.